Board of County Commissioners now in session. We'll begin with a prayer followed by a pledge. Commissioner Jones, if you'd lead us in prayer, please.
Yes, sir. Heavenly Father, we thank you today for this day you've given unto all of us. We ask today, as we go through this meeting, through the rest of our day, that you be with us in wisdom and knowledge and understanding, above all, that you would grant unto us that sit in these seats discretion today, in Jesus and in Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic whose stand is one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda would be approval of minutes.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Mastis, second by Commissioner Sanders. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next will be payment of county bills.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Lockley, second by Commissioner Jones. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next would be Department Director's Report. Mr. Howard Neighbors, Superintendent of Public Works.
Good morning, Commissioners. How y'all doing?
Morning.
Got a couple items on the bridge deal that they had closed, the Trout Creek Bridge, it's open now, so they got it finished. We got traveling on it and last time we talked about employee retiring Tommy Sallor, and it'll be March the fifteenth, and I'd like to go ahead and ask the board for approval to go ahead and move somebody in that position, which would be that following Monday, which would be on the, I want to say the nineteenth, and that would be Little Mitch McCaplin.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Mastis, second by Commissioner Lockley. Any discussion?
Yeah. Did you go on hire a man in his place?
Yes, sir.
Or hire a woman, man, woman, or somebody?
Yeah, so I'm gonna move Mitch to a working supervisor, and then also to ask the board for approval for equipment operator, which start out at twenty-five thousand, which he's still, like, you know, he's still gotta be inmate certified, you know, because that's the rule, so, and run that two weeks, you know, in a paper.
Please of the board.
Can I, can I ask a question, Mr. Chairman? You don't have to advertise the working foreman's position like we've always done, since you're gonna make a transfer up, just make sure that he's the only one that makes that?
We can run that two weeks.
Well, that's what, we've always done it in-house.
Yeah, okay.
So, if you do it in-house, because you don't never know, maybe some, somebody else may want it, too.
It may be.
Yeah.
It could.
Get to be fair.
Well, we could do that, and we'd run it two weeks in-house.
Okay.
And then I would get back with the board, you know, the next board meeting to see who gets the position.
And you had, he wanted to hire another man to take Tommy's place, I mean, another employee?
Yeah, which would be a working, a working equipment operator.
Please of the board on that issue.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Mastis, second by Commissioner Lockley. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries also. Anything else for the board?
That's all I got.
Any of the board members have anything for Mr. Howard this morning?
Just like to say thank you, Mr. Howard, for everything you all do.
Okay.
Anything else for Mr. Howard? Thank you, Howard. Next will be, what you said, Mr. Davis is out.
Ah, Mr. Davis is attending to a dog bite situation within the city of Appalachia, Colorado, right now, him and Bulldog and the, I'm sorry, and, um, city police are there, that's how serious it is, so.
I didn't see any action items on the report.
Oh, let me ask, can I?
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Schuler.
Yes, sir.
What the deal is, for the city of Appalachia and the dog for our animal control, do we still have, what kind of, do we have an agreement with them?
There is no inter-local agreement, but when the board recently amended your animal control ordinance, I was directed to include, I believe it's, I know it's at least the city of Appalachia, I believe it's probably both for the city of Carabel and the city of Appalachia, where we can provide animal control services within the city limits. Before that change, you could not.
So they can do it now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I just wanted to get that straight, though. I want them out there without agreement.
Okay, well, we do not have an inter-local, they're, they're not providing any compensation to the county for this public service that the county is providing. Are y'all instructing me to go discuss an inter-local agreement with the city for the provision of those services? Is that, or am I misunderstanding?
Well, I would like to, I wanna make a motion that we get a, we, we get an agreement with them, because the way it's done now, we out there, we got our people out there, and there's no agreement, really, you don't know who, who is in control.
Yes, sir.
People like the animals, I ain't, I don't have nothing against it, but we still need to know how, what we can do, and what, what, without agreement, I don't see what they can do.
Yes, sir. I will contact the city attorney and have a conversation with him and report back to the board then.
Mr. Chairman?
Mm-hmm.
If we're gonna do that with the city of Appalachia, let's go ahead and add the city of Carabel into it, and get an inter-local agreement with both of the cities, and then we'll be, we'll be up on, on top of it. You agree, Mr. Lockley?
Yes, ma'am.
Would you make that in form of a motion?
Yeah, I wanna make that a motion to do the city of Appalachia and the city of Carabel.
And I, I second this motion, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Lockley, second by Commissioner Sanders. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. With fun to not be in here, next will be Ms. Pam Brunel, or setting in for hers, Ms. Trace.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
So, I only have one thing on the action items today, is the opening the RFQs for our documented quote for our hurricane loss mitigation program, and we also asked permission for the task force to do the scoring to be Gary Millander, Pam Brunel, and myself.
So moved.
Okay.
We're doing the hurricane loss mitigation program?
Mm-hmm.
We're opening bids for that?
Yes.
These are RFQs, so it's no money.
No money.
So, I'll help them up, and you do your magic.
Yes. For our task force.
The first one, there's no name on the outside.
It says Florida Retro Fitz.
Oh, okay.
What's the first one?
Florida Retro Fitz.
Florida Retro Fitz.
And this one's from Hurricane Shutter. Hurricane Shutter, Carverville, Florida.
Are we not gonna open these things, Alan?
I'm opening them right now, but I said these are RFQs, so there are no, there's no money.
There's no money, there's just a documented quote.
Okay. So you're just gonna pass them to this committee?
That's what I said, that was just J.P. Roberts from Carverville, or this is Hurricane Shutter, it must be the brand name, J.P. Roberts is the company.
Yes.
And then that was whoever I said it was.
Florida Retro Fitz.
Out of Palm Bay.
Okay.
So those are three responses.
Yes.
We have a motion and a second to take these to the committee and come back with a recommendation?
I make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
We already have a motion and a second.
We have a motion and a second.
We already have that.
Yes.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Not motion carries.
I don't have anything else, so.
Any, any comment from the board, from Ms. Trace? There'd be nothing, uh, nothing else? Thank you for coming in today.
Thank you.
Next will be Mr. Eric Lovestrand, and I noticed reading his report last night, he's got the flu or something, didn't see any action items on his report, so we'll move on down. Ms. Lisa Lance, Library Director.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Morning.
Don't really have any action items, just some key items that I'd like to draw everyone's attention to. The library's still offering the AARP free tax aid, that continues through April twelfth. Customers do need to sign up for that. We've seen a, a full house each week, we've been doing that, so hats off to our representatives out of Waculla County that's coming down and doing that for them. Today, we have an adult gardening program at East Point at one-thirty, it's hydroponic gardening on the cheap. Those have been very well received. March's topic is gonna be Totally Tomatoes Tips, Tricks, and Techniques for Success. We do have another big event this weekend at the Carabel Library, the Friends of the Library is hosting the soup, bread, and book sale. We had a great event on February third at the East Point location, we saw about two-hundred-and-fifty customers that day, and did well with theirs, so I invite everybody else, the, out on this Saturday at ten o'clock at the Carabel location. Ten o'clock starts the book sale, and by eleven o'clock, we will have the soup sale started. We did hold a reception last week for the Carabel winners of the kids' tag art. Of course, the first-place winner was a Carabel student, Garrison Millander, so we had a great event with that. Rick Watson was there in a presentation for him, the Carabel mayor was there, and some of the commissioners and friends and family, so he was excited, and a job well done to him and the other winners. We did honor two other winners from Carabel as well. Monday, March fifth, our East Point branch will return to regular operating hours of nine to six. We'd been operating under winter hours, but March fifth, we will go back nine to six. Just a mid-winter update for those that like to hear good numbers. In a comparison for, from January twenty-seventeen and January twenty-eighteen, our circulation was up in the Carabel location by thirty-six percent, in East Point, a twenty-nine percent increase. Our attendance in the comparison of the same dates, a sixty percent increase in Carabel and thirty-four percent in East Point. We added in twenty-seventeen, over seventeen-hundred new items to our collection, and that is a comparison to twenty-sixteen of a little over a thousand. So, the library has been very busy, and gets busier all the time, so we appreciate all of our customers, we welcome new ones every day, and I don't have anything else for you? Any questions?
Any comments from the board, Ms. Lisa? I think the numbers that you are, have put out shows what kinda job you're doing.
No, thank you.
As far as the increased use in, in making the library more sustainable, and keep up the good work.
Well, thank you very much.
Any other comments from the board members?
Just thank you for your good job.
No, thanks.
Thank you for coming in today. Next on the agenda will be Mr. Jason Puckett, Airport Manager.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
No action items, just wanna bring you up to date on some things going out the airport. We've been working on the electrical systems out there, and the, that process, all the original work is complete. The FAA did perform a flight check for our new Pappy's on runway fourteen-thirty-two, and confirmed that they were installed and configured properly. During construction, the airfield drainage improvement, the electrical cables providing power to runway six-two-four, the edge lights were cut, and the cables were not shown in any known record drawings, were not known to exist in this area, and once it was identified that these cables were cut, an investigation or plan was developed and a timeline was put into place. So, on November third, we were notified that the cables were cut by the contractor. November eighth, we requested that TCA Electrical Contractors, the folks that was doing the lighting grant already on the airfield, to go look in to see what the cost of repair and replace what was damaged. On November seventeenth, the contractor performed a site visit and determined that the regulator out there was, was, was damaged. So, we went to the FDOT and asked if we could use some of the unused funds from the lighting grant to pay for this new regulator. That was approved, we brought a change order to you guys, you guys signed the change order. The reason I'm saying this is we've got a timeline issue, and so now, we're waiting to March eighth for the new regulator to be, to be shipped to us and be installed. The reason I'm bringing it up to you is I want you to know that we're doing everything we can to get that done as quickly as we possibly can. We've had an airport tenant that was upset that that hadn't been done, you know, in a timely manner, but, but we're, we're pushing those contractors as hard as we can to get that regulator shipped to us so we can get it put in, so I just wanted to bring you up to speed on that. The airfield drainage improvements, all the original work is being completed, we did have some leftover funding that we're gonna try to replace some more pipe under one of our taxiways that's been damaged, so we're trying to work with the contractors now to get, to use every dollar we can from the FDOT. And then the commercial access road, the industrial part, that wetland permitting is still ongoing, hopefully, we can get that bitted out in the spring. That's the last extension we signed with you guys, last time I was here, to extend that grant out to December thirty-first of two thousand and eighteen. And then the Economic Development Plan, VRPH, is tentatively scheduling a March twentieth final presentation to you guys, to let, let you all know what they've come up with out there at the airport. And then finally, we are excited about our March twenty-fourth Aviation Day fly-in, we've got quite a bit of, of, of response for that. We're gonna have free airplane rides for, for children, we're gonna have some, some different World War Two, World War Two-era aircraft that will be there for static display, also offering rides. We've got a little car show coming, so it's gonna be a good time at the airport, we'd like to invite any of you that could come, be a part of it, love to, love to have you out there. That's all I have for you this morning.
Any comments from the board, or Mr. Jason?
Only one, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate you doing this, because it was a, a big hit in Carabel.
Yes, ma'am.
And this right here, I got a little nephew that he's all into World War Two airplanes and stuff, and he's just turned eight Sunday.
That's awesome.
He's gonna qualify to be able to fly.
That's good.
But I hope, I hope he can fly on one of those old planes, it would, it will tickle the life out of him, but, thank you, Jason.
Well, what I'll do is I'll actually be down with, with an airplane that I fly, and I'm not gonna do this for the community and for public, but if any of you would like to take a airplane ride to see your airport from the air, I'd, I'd, I'd give you a ride.
Real quick, Jason, before you leave.
Yes, sir.
Doesn't sound like they wanna get off of the town, but anyways, I think you're doing us an excellent job out there regardless of, of the complaints that's been heard, I did read through all that last night, read through the timeline that the engineers provided.
Yes, sir.
The only, only other question is, now that we know where these lines are, is there gonna be some kinda record made of that?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, and the lines will be also be in conduit now, and they'll, they'll be adequately marked, so we'll know where they're at on a, on a, on a, on a plat and a plan for future reference.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for the job.
We're gonna do it right, we're gonna do it right this time.
Any other comments from the board? Thank you for coming in this morning.
Yes, sir, thank y'all.
Next on the agenda will be public comments. Please come forward, state your name for the record. I'd like to inform the public that I've been informed and had complaints about I give some people longer to speak than I do others. Mr. Michael Marone will now be timing this, you have three minutes. I've always, and I've been the chairman here a couple of different times, and I've always tried to allow people to speak, but sometimes it just goes on and on and on, and I, I'm not the type person to be too rude to everybody, so I wanna inform everybody that Mr. Michael Marone is now keeping the time, and when your three minutes is up, I will let you know. Speak your name for the record and proceed.
My name is Ben Houston, I'm a citizen of Ballpoint, Marshall County. I wanted to make everybody aware of, and we've had four dog attacks in the last two years on Alligator Point Beach, the same dog, some mixed breed pit we found out last week. This, these bites and these attacks resulted in two rotor cup operations for one lady, elderly lady, and a dog bite with another lady last Monday, and she had to go to the hospital for treatment. And we would like, I asked Fonda a couple of years ago to give me some cards made up with our ordinance on dogs, where we could take them and give them to people when they show up, show up, because we have a lot of rentals over there, give them to them, because people just, dogs go everywhere, they take them off their lease, and they, they don't, they don't respect the permanent people over in the island, so, just wanted everybody to know about that, it's getting worse.
Are you aware of that, Mike?
No, but I could find out and see if he was just in the back.
He was outside just a second ago.
See if we can get the placards, some placards made that we can give.
Did they pick up the dog? Was the dog picked up?
No, sir, no, sir. We, we'd like to see what could go, what procedures we need, we need to go through to get this taken care of, no.
Were y'all on the dog bite, did the, did the victim report the dog bite?
Now, I think something's happening today.
Okay.
Alan, I'm not sure, but I think something happened today, but this is.
We have to have a report, you know, of the dog bite at the time, not, you know, two years later.
This, this, this person comes in the winter, and one of them happened last year, and they came back this year, and darn if they didn't bite somebody, I mean, they should've taken note from last year, or maybe missed somebody.
The dogs are seasonal, isn't it?
Let me.
Dog note is the same issue, Fonda, I just, I spoke to Fonda while he was back there, he said that one was an issue, something happened this weekend, or to the end of last week, and there was a four-hundred-and-fifty-dollar fine issued, and they were taking some action, but I'll, I'll get Fonda to get with you guys and make sure we're talking about the same dog and the same incidents, okay? And see what we can do.
Well, that's what I wanted to ask, is it the same dog that's been biting the people year after year, Mr. Ben?
Yes, ma'am, but I understand it's the same, same dog, they have two of them, but the one that bit and the one that hurt the lady was a mixed pit. We just found that out the other day, we didn't know it was a pit.
Okay, thank you for letting us know.
Any other public comment? Come forward, state your name for the record.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name's Sarah Hines, I'm the Assistant Director for the Floor Department of Health in Franklin and Gulf Counties, and I have Emerald Larkin here, she's our amazing registered nurse, and we're here to recognize Heart Health Month for February, and just quickly share some information. You know, heart disease, it still remains a major threat to Floridians, and almost half of Americans have high blood pressure, but as our state surgeon general says, if you take care of your heart, your heart will take care of you. So here, we're here, we're just to share some easy, heart-healthy tips. Number one, you can fuel your heart by eating a healthy diet. You can make half your plate fruits and vegetables, just a quick tip, and I'm honestly curious about the tomato tips at the library, so you might wanna check that out. You can move your heart by being physically active, aim for a hundred-and-fifty minutes a week, and if you choose to walk, walk fast enough so that you can talk, but you couldn't sing, just a little tip to keep your heart rate up. And you can love your heart by quitting tobacco. So there's a lot of free resources out there, you can just call the health department to get started, and we can get you on track. Now, Emerald's gonna share some symptoms associated with a heart attack that are really important to recognize.
Good morning, and thank you. January nineteenth, two thousand and eighteen, I was made more aware of what a symptom of a heart attack could be that would, maybe you would not recognize. My father, I visited him Thursday evening, that was the eighteenth, he complained of neck pain, so I got him a hot towel, being a good daughter and a registered nurse, I massaged his shoulders, still the discomfort did not go away, and that night, he ended up passing out. So, he walked out of our house, got on a stretcher, went to TMH. Unfortunately, he ended up passing away after he was coded three times, he had a heart attack. We did not realize the symptoms of a heart attack were neck pain, just simply neck pain. You know, you could wake up and think, gosh, I've just slept wrong, or I pulled a muscle the other day, but it's not that simple sometimes, and we need to all be aware of that. For women, sometimes the, the pain or discomfort may continue down one or both arms, the back, neck, jaw, or even the stomach. Shortness of breath with or without chest discomfort. It's not always that clinical sign, or on the TV, that crushing chest pain that just grips everyone, that makes you think that you're having a heart attack. It could be nausea or sweating. Most commonly in men, the chest pain or discomfort will arise, but that discomfort can show up in other areas of the body, most like women, the, both arms, the back, the neck, the jaw, or the stomach, the shortness of breath, breaking out in a cold sweat, having nausea or lightheadedness. And when, while it's February and it's Heart Health Awareness Month, you know, keep your heart in mind, it's gonna keep you healthy and strong for the rest of your life, gonna keep your friends and family strong and healthy if you remember these tips and tricks that Sarah and I have given you today, and also, it might save a life. Thank you very much.
Thank y'all for coming in. Come forward, speak your name for the record.
Good morning, I'm Bert Bolt, I'm from Alligator Point. I have a background as a physical therapist, and I have a lot of interest in the medical services here in our community, and specifically, the organization of those medical services, and I know that you're actively looking relative to Weems Memorial Hospital and other issues in our Franklin County Medical Services. Just did some homework that I'm gonna leave with you this morning. There's a group called Health Group West, it's a national health consulting group, and I've found that it'll provide consultation services for local government, specifically, and this is the punchline, that they aid county officials charged with healthcare service oversight and development. I'll look into it more to find out just what their potential would be. I brought this material for you folks to have, and when I find more information out, I'll bring it to you, and it might be just one more overlay that we can use as we look at the organization of our healthcare. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? The next item on the agenda will be Mr. Carl Whaley, Franklin County School District. Please come forward, state your name for the record.
Good morning, Board. Carl Whaley, Franklin County School Board. I'm here today to speak with y'all and ask you for any support that we can get in procuring a secondary ingress egress of the, okay, secondary ingress egress of the Franklin County Schools. As you know, the school's been in place for ten years now, we have one way in, one way out. If we have any type of active shooter event, any threat on our school campus, our emergency services have one way to provide service. So, we've been seeking for years a secondary way to get in and out of the school properties. I've been working with Ken Weber and John Brown with the Florida Forest Service to try to find alternate ways of maybe getting this secondary road in. We've looked at the whole forest area behind the school, as I'm sure y'all are aware, the school board owns the twenty-six acres to the north of the Franklin County Jail, where we would use that as a reunification point in any time of an emergency. Most of the portions of the forest there are very low, swampy, which would be very costly to put a road in. What we're looking at is, if you'll look at the school in about the middle of the screen, you'll see the football field go up on the upper-right corner of the school, you can't see it, but there is a road that was kinda halfway plowed down years ago for our cross-country track team to use, and it makes its way up.
Can I help you with that?
Uh, no. No. It makes its way up to what a lot of people called the old dump road. I don't think that the road actually has a physical name, but it comes out in the middle of our properties. It used to be pretty bad, it has been worked by the Florida Forest Service, culvert's put in where washouts were.
Where am I wrong there?
The road will take off the corner of the, the, the upper-right corner of the football field, and, and it meanders.
And here, and then goes out?
Yes, up to the old dump road. We've looked at the possibilities of cutting through county properties, we don't think that it's very wise to bring schoolchildren across the landfill properties because of the methane and other contaminants that may lie there. We've had some talk with a public, a private individual about cutting through his properties, but there are bar pits that are so close to his property lines, we don't feel that it would be safe for our children to transport through there either. We're, we're kind of at, this is the best solution, is to cut through the forest on this back road, and what we, as the school, would like to ask the commission is to support us in discussions with the Florida Forest Service, and when it, when we are able to be granted an easement, if, if there's possibilities of, of help with hauling and spreading of lime rock to make this road passable. Right now, it's pretty sandy, and we have no heavy equipment with the school systems to, to carry out this, this duty.
Can I ask you a question, Carl?
Yes, sir.
Um, Mr. Whaley, um, are you saying help with the lime rock, is, is y'all gonna buy it, or what?
I, that's what I would assume, Mr. Lockley, is we would buy it, we just have no way of hauling or spreading of lime rock. We're also helped, are hoping that maybe the Florida Forest Service will help us as well. We're also help, hoping that maybe the Florida Forest Service will help us as well, because it would, it would act as a, a fire buffer for all of the homes in Gramercy Plantation, the landfill, the sheriff's office, Humane Society, as well as the school. It would help, you know, make a buffer for them to stop fire moving from the north or northeast to the south-southwest. So we're kind of helping, hoping that they can help as well, but if we have to have more than what they can help, we would like to see if y'all could help us out with that as well.
Let me, let me interject something in here. You know, you, you actually need a good road going in there.
Yes, sir.
Oh, so school buses can pass, and you've got to have a ditch. It needs to be engineered.
Yes, sir.
There's, there's some engineering that needs to be done when you're talking about going through the wetlands and the low areas. In my opinion, we should either try to, the school board needs to look at either getting a legislative appropriation to put this road in, and the county, our board has no money. Our money is, is budgeted out, just like the school board does, you know, the different constitutionals and this and that.
Yes, sir.
We also do not have a bulldozer to actually make the road. The road probably needs a 60-foot right-of-way, and then when you go into permit, and you're going, have to look at swells and stormwater retention, and it needs to be done right in order for these school buses to be able to travel that road and, and the road to hold up. Because if you just go in there and put a dirt road in there with a little lime rock on it, it's going to continuously be a messed-up road.
Well, it-
I, I will say this, though. I, I do believe that this board will support you and give you a letter of support, whether it be for legislative appropriation or anything we can do of that nature in supporting, getting your road in there. I, I think the board would, would be more than palatable. I mean, I can't speak for the board, I can only speak for myself, but I think I know the members of the board well enough that, that we do support the, the children of the school, and, and, you know, we, we run different children programs as far as soccer and football and baseball, so the county itself does put a lot of money into the youth of this county, so there, there's no doubt we support the kids of this, of our county. But I actually think that you need a, a good road called to, to, to be able to facilitate that and, and, and give a safe way of travel, as you were speaking earlier. It needs to be safe for the kids to get in and out, and school buses, it has a lot to do with that, bringing kids in and out of that school. We have discussed this on several occasions, that if Highway 98 washed out in a hurricane, how would the kids get to school?
Right.
I mean, so, so this is not the first discussion that we've all had, but that would be, it's going to take some money to, to, to do that. Letters of support to the Forest Service, or to private landowners, if that's what the school board decides they want to do. I think the county would be willing to give you a letter of support for that. We don't have a whole lot of equipment to buy, I mean, to build roads, and I, and I think you actually need to, we might can use the same route you're talking about, but I don't think the road that you're speaking of, I'm not sure, has ability to have school buses passing, you know, coming and going on the same road. I'm, I'm not sure about that.
It has been cleared out, Chairman, where two vehicles could pass safely. It is sandy, and we would only use this as an emergency ingress egress. It would not be a full-time run ingress egress into the schools. And as, as you said, we have sought legislative help to make this happen on the school board level, so maybe as the commission adding support to ours, we can, we can definitely make some legislative move to, to get some help to build this, this road.
Would the board be amicable to giving them letter of supports and supporting them in any ways that we can to try to help them get this road in?
Yeah, I make a motion that we do it because mine should be a good time for y'all to get some help with all the things that going on.
We hate to bring up-
And you need a backup.
We hate to bring up the, the light of the tragedy in Parkland, but, you know, we definitely want to be able to have things in place to help us if any kind of situation ever happened here.
Yeah, you need a backup system because you, you, you in a critical situation, one way in and one way out, and that's-
Would you put that in form of a motion, Commissioner Lockley, that we-
I make a motion that we send a letter of support.
To whoever they need it.
To whoever they need, how many they need.
Whatever they-
Whatever they need.
Mr. Chairman, Carl, let me ask you something. Have y'all already approached the legislators about legislative appropriation?
Last legislative session, I approached-
Y'all haven't done it this year?
I have not this year so far. We were trying to work with the forestry. We have a meeting next week with the four, members of the forestry and, and public lands to discuss the easements, because that, that, we have never been able to make it past that point so far.
Yeah.
But we will be at legislative days and, and be approaching the legislators with this.
It sounds like you're going to need it this year, so-
Yeah.
And a lot of everything, and the tragedy that happened last week, I think it would be very, very important for y'all to contact the legislative delegation and to let them know this is something underneath your school that you need some special appropriations for.
Right.
And see if they can do it, since they are going to be looking at legislation, dealing with the safety issues, dealing with the mental health issue and stuff. So I think this would be a good time for you to do that.
Yes, ma'am.
And, and not only for the legislative appropriation, but they can also help you with Division of Forestry and some of the state lands issues that you got.
True. We were actually making moves before the tragedy in Parkland, and it's just kind of made this situation grow, you know, the, when things happen, the need is really shown then.
One more question, Mr. Chairman. Alan, you remember we had discussions with the school board many years ago when they were talking about putting the school out there, about an alternate route? What was the alternate route at that time? Was it the same, same as Carl's?
Well, not really, because we were, at that time, we were looking for the most direct route, and the Carl's route may be, may be the easiest route, I don't know, but unfortunately, not the most direct route.
Right.
And we were looking for a route that time on the northern boundary of Gramercy, and this is before the big pit got dug.
Right.
On the northern boundary of Gramercy, coming right in and coming direct, it was more a direct route, but now there's, you've got a pit there, and at the time, there was a big wet one that we couldn't cross. I mean, Carl, I think you know this, there is another route that is, that unfortunately is on private property in a gated community, but would be easily accessible, and that's the route right where Mr. Marone has his thing there. It's about 300 feet coming south, and you'd hook into the Gramercy cul-de-sac, but I realize Gramercy's a gated community, and I'm sure that they have their own criteria, but that is a paved road leading right up to the school board property.
Yes.
It happens to be private.
Within, within 100 feet.
Have you talked with them, Carl?
We have talked with Gramercy. We kind of run into that, it's a, it's under homeowners association, and some like it and some don't, and-
It's 100 feet versus a mile of road made to build.
I mean, I would be even so, so glad, I mean, venture out and say, hey, let's, let's, you know, give them support on this with the Gramercy also.
Yeah.
Because if we can go 100 foot versus a mile, that's going to be better on the school board and better on this county commission.
Especially talking about a secondary access, I mean, if you're talking about a permanent, I can see, you see-
Yeah, it's just a secondary during storms, or-
Or some emergency, an emergency situation.
Yeah, an emergency situation.
It would be gated until such time as it needed to be opened, and-
Right.
The sheriff's office, EMS, fire would have access 24/7, and then if hurricane, then we would have to open it up to making-
I'm not sure the criteria that would have to be established, but yeah, I think that, I would try that also, because it's, it's a very short access point.
Well, we got to, we need to get, check with every possibility that is, because we got to protect them kids, we got to protect them teachers, we got to protect everybody who work out there. I mean, it's our job, that part of us. I mean, we, and that one way in, we got nine. Hey, they blocked that off, you, you in trouble.
Yes, sir.
Well, we need to do that, and we need to get on it. I mean, ASAP.
I think, Commissioner Lockley, your, your motion was to give them a letter of support to whatever group or wherever they may be going, that the county commission supports their effort, whether it be Gramercy or, or the state legislative delegation, Division of Forestry, Michael, whatever we can do to help as far as letter of support, to support this, making this happen. But we, we need a second on Mr. Lockley's-
Second.
We got a second. Back to Commissioner Jones. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries. Carl, just let us know what we can do to help.
Thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
Commissioner, since we're ahead of time, and the B O A's advertised, I called the sheriff from his training earlier to come over, and we can go to that if the board is not mine.
Uh, okay.
The sheriff.
Sheriff A.J. Smith, come forward, state your name for the record.
A.J. Smith, Sheriff Franklin County. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Sheriff.
How's everybody this morning?
Good.
I prepared a notebook that has the slides that are in the PowerPoint. I want you to have those, so you can look at them if you want to look at them later, or if you had a chance this morning, I put them on your desk. But first, before I get started, I have some of my staff here, and really, the things that we've accomplished couldn't have been done without all the staff at the sheriff's office, so especially the folks at the jail, Major Summerhill, Captain Barnes. If y'all would stand up for just a minute, just all the folks in the sheriff's office, Whitney, Renee, those folks helped do some of the things that you're going to see in this presentation, some of the upgrades we've done at the sheriff's office. The building is almost 35 years old, and when I took it over, there were a lot of things that were broken, a lot of things that needed repair, and there's still things that need repair, and that's some of the things we're going to talk about this morning. I know that there's also some of the funding that I'm asking for to be returned to the sheriff's office as part of it, but I wanted to kind of show you some of the things that we have accomplished this first year, and talk about some of the things that, that need to be repaired as we go forward. One of the first things, it's the very last page in your book, but I'm going to talk about it first, calls for service. 2017, we had almost double the calls for service. That just shows our productivity has increased as compared to the last two years. We've been really busy, we've been out doing a lot of things. Just one of the categories, which is not in your notebook, drug arrest. We've made 135 drug arrests in 2017 compared to 96 the year before, so we've increased it there, and we've been really busy, as well as trying to get our facility looking like a professional organization should, so that the employees will perform at a higher level, and they have. So as you, I'm going to go back to the first slide and start running through that for Okay, some of the improvements are some of the things that need to be improved. This is our current view from the monitors inside dispatch and inside some of the control, the control area in the jail. As you can see, and that's one of the things we're talking about replacing, it is certainly inadequate, and I don't know how old the system is, it's very, very, very old and needs to be replaced. This is the control panel inside. We have one in dispatch that controls all the doors in the jail. We have another one in the pod, the control room inside, that's in the middle of the jail facility, where the corrections deputies work. And if you see, there's, this is as old as the jail, and sometimes when they press the buttons to open doors, it doesn't work. So if we had a, an emergency inside one of the dorms, we may not get a door open, they may have to go out and manually open the door. So this is a huge problem, and this needs to be replaced as well. Both of them are not working properly, the one in dispatch and the one in the control center. This is just pictures of some of the stuff that needs to be replaced, some of the doors. There's a lot of, as you know, we have a lot of rust issues, and we've tried to fix those with paint, but there's a lot of them that are probably going to have to be replaced at some point. This is the pump station that is currently on the grounds. It has been broken for many, many years, and it's probably going to cost more to fix it than it's worth. My recommendation is get rid of it. East Point Water Sewer's running a line that we're going to be able to work off of. It's just, it's an eyesore there, and it doesn't work, and it hasn't worked, and my recommendation is get rid of it. Right now, our main AC's good, and I thank y'all, I know y'all have replaced some air conditioners already, thank you for doing that. And this is just one, it's, we're trying to get it, keep it going as long as we can until it needs replacing, but it'll be the next one that needs replacing, and then we'll have all of those finished. As you can see, there are probably hundreds of feet of copper pipes all through the jail, and a lot of them, as you can see, have been Band-Aid, just the piece of rubber with hose clamps. They're leaking, and at some point, they're probably going to have to be replaced. But right now, the ones when they leak, we try to fix them, and this is pretty epidemic throughout the jail where all these pipes are running. This is windows in the pods where the inmates are. These windows, as you can see, are totally covered in rust, and we painted everything inside the jail and outside the jail, and this is the last thing. They're probably going to have to be sandblasted and painted, but at some point, they're going to have to be replaced because they've almost, some of them have almost rusted completely through. And that's one of the things I want to note that, well, we'll see that as we go forward, but a lot of the, 99% of the painting has been done. This is medical, this is our medical suite. On the left is the office that the head nurse works out of. On the, and that is to the, that little office is also inside the one on the right. That's the exam room. If you'll notice, there's piles and piles of paper, and there is no electronical medical records. Most jails have electronical medical records, so they do not have to keep all these papers. They can't hardly do the examinations for all the papers that are on the exam table and stuff, you'll see them on the floor. They're doing the best they can with this very small space, and it, understand, 35 years ago, it was a lot different than what we're encountering now. But we have solutions for these. I'm not bringing you problems, I'm going to bring you some solutions as well. This is our visitation area. As you can see, there's little cubicles where people come in, they pick up the phone, they talk to their, their loved ones that are in jail or whatever. Lot of those phones, they work sometimes, sometimes they don't. It's antiquated as well. This is our trailer that houses investigations. The roof leaks, and I'm told it was second-hand, it was a hand-me-down from the school. I don't know how long it's been there, but it's in total disrepair, and it needs to, basically, it needs to go. This is just more inside investigations. You'll see where the roof's been leaking. Actually, there's some places in there where you can see the sky from inside. This is what it looked like in the back when I took over. There was piles of trash everywhere, debris everywhere. I don't have any pictures from inside the jail, but there was graffiti all inside the dorms where the prisoners are, just all kind of, just graffiti. This is just more pictures, you have them in your notebooks. I mean, just years and years of debris. And this is one of our sheds that was full of stuff, and I'm not sure if it's this one, it may have been this or one of the other, there were some trailers. People wouldn't even go in there because they said it was full of snakes, and those trailers have been removed. Old cars that were there. Okay, here's some of the improvements that we have made, and I'm going to give you some suggestions on what we can do going forward to fix some of the other stuff. We actually just got a grant for body cams, and we're going to talk about some of the things that we're doing. We just got a $81,000 grant for body cams. We're going to, all the deputies are going to be going to body cams, so we'll have a record of what is going on for their protection and for the protection of the public. I was never really a big proponent of body cams, but of late, if we can get them for free, why not? I think it's going to be a value-add to what we're doing to protect our employees and protect the community, because a lot of times, we get calls, deputy A did something, said something, well, now we'll be able to find out if it's true and probably slow down complaints, and probably folks will be on their best behavior when they know they're wearing a camera. This is our administrative wing. This is where we cleaned up, fixed up. As you can see, there's nothing in the hallways, totally uncluttered, fresh paint, oops, it looks really nice, very professional. This is my office. We've, it doubles as a conference room, because we didn't have one, and is my office. And what I do, I work at the end of the desk. We have our command staff meetings- We have our command staff meetings every week to talk about issues that are important to us in the county and this is where we meet. So we've taken that sheriff's office and made it, you know, kind of a multipurpose room. Our new CAD system of, my good friend Sheriff Tommy Ford gave us the CAD system that they use. It's about a $500,000 value. All we had to pay for was the modems in the cars. And we actually had about 40 computers donated to us from Broward County Sheriff's Office. So we were able to put together a 21st century CAD system that's gonna deliver really good, a really good product at a very minimal cost. The modems in the cars were 200 bucks a piece. We absorbed that out of our budget and we put one in every car. Not only, the cool thing about the new CAD system is it has AVL, which is Automatic Vehicle Locator. So I know where every vehicle is on this map. They have one in dispatch, I have one in my office, the major has one in his. And you can see those little, in your book, you see it better, those names and numbers, that's the deputies. So I can see where they are 24 hours a day. I can tell how fast they're going. I can see if they turn their blue lights on. So again, it's a safety feature. If a deputy's in distress, we know where they are. If somebody says a deputy's speeding, we can look on there and see. I can pull back and see how fast Deputy Smith was going at any certain time. So if somebody says they were passed by Deputy Smith and he was doing 100 miles an hour, I can go back on here and look at it and see. We're also gonna be able, when the state attorney's office finishes, they're having some computer issues. I've spoken with Jack Campbell. They'll be able to go in the system and download whatever they need, statements, reports, photographs, and we won't have to be taking paperwork back and forth. They can get it all electronically, which is, also saves in manpower and time. This is inside the jail. If you walk down that hallway, that's where the pods are, that's where the inmates are. Do you notice how clean it is? Everything inside there's been repainted, the floors are kept like this. When you go inside there, this is what you're gonna see anytime you go in. And again, just my compliments to the staff that have been doing this. And we've done it with inmate labor. They're the ones who are doing most of the painting, they're doing most of the fixing up at the supervision of, you know, our jail staff, just doing an outstanding job. Just fresh paint, just kind of a new look out front. We're also going to a new visitation system. It's a video visitation. So, you know, we've had issues with contraband coming into the jail. A lot of times, it's the visitors that are bringing it in. And we also talked about the fence, which we're getting ready to start next week where they drive in and drop it off. Well, with the video visitation, people won't have to come to the jail anymore. They can visit with their loved ones from home or anywhere there's a computer. We're also gonna have three stations just like this in a building outside the property there at the sheriff's office where if someone doesn't have access at home, they can come and do it, but they don't come inside the jail. So this way, we're gonna eliminate people bringing, we have people bringing contraband and hiding it in the bathroom so the trustees can pick it up. We're all constantly doing that. So this is gonna eliminate a lot of that. So, and when we do away with the video visitation, our plan is to take the visitation area now, since we won't be utilizing it, and make that into a medical ward so that the nurses will have enough room to work. They'll be able to see the patients without papers and everything else being around. So we're gonna be able to do that for a very minimal cost because we're gonna do it with inmate labor and it's not gonna be any kind of structural change to the building, but it's gonna give those ladies more space so they can do their job more effectively. When I first got elected, we put AEDs in all the cars. We've actually used them, that's the defibrillators that save lives. And actually, we've used them two or three times to, when people are having heart attacks. This is one that's in the office. We have them in the back and we have them in the office in case there's some kind of medical emergency there. Everybody's been trained on the use of it. We took the pole barn that was in the back and we got rid of all the trailers out there that were dilapidated and we enclosed part of the pole barn to make a warehouse. And that way, we had a place, because we didn't have anywhere to store stuff that was climate controlled. You know, you got uniforms, you got mattresses for the jail, you gotta have a climate controlled place to store them. So we made this. And Captain Barnes and Major Summerhill were instrumental in doing a lot of that. Again, inmate labor, just the cost of materials. These are some of the things that we've talked about that need to be replaced. The phone system, and I think County Administrator has the list of the cost of these items. Phone system, the camera system. And a lot of times, we've, we had, we saw people bringing contraband. We'd go back and look at the cameras, but we couldn't tell what, who it was or what it was. We could just see the shape of a car coming through. So we know, and it's hard to see what's going on inside the pods where the inmates are too. We, the corrections deputies need to be able to see them all the time, so that's been a big issue. The control panel like we talked about, the medical unit, the fence. And what we wanna do is take the other part of this pole barn and enclose it and make offices for investigations and the other, other people who need office space and don't have evidence right now, we have evidence in a mobile home. We need to put that in here. So we're gonna, we would take the front of that and enclose it and make offices for the investigations, evidence, stuff like that. I'm gonna have Ginger, if you want to talk about the numbers. We have, what we wanna do, let me just, let me back up just a minute. What we've done, we have four school resource deputies. Previously, there was one in each school. Now we have four. Superintendent Moses had asked for a couple to have two deputies in the big school. ABC School has one, and then we have a supervisor who can relieve them. There is never a time our schools are open that we don't have a deputy there. If one has to leave, somebody will come and fill in for them. So there'll, there'll never be a time there's nobody there. They have agreed to help supplement some of that cost. Because if I take four deputies off the road, that's a lot of deputies to take off the road and be able to answer calls and handle the crime, especially with the drug problems that we're having and the, and the level of activity that we're dealing with, with the drug complaints. So, come on up, Ginger. So they have agreed to give us some money. It doesn't completely pay the cost of all of them, but it certainly helps us so that I can fill some of these positions and get them back on the road. And that's what, what I need to do so we can continue to answer calls and deal with the drug problem and things like that.
Before Ginger begins, Commissioner, use the handout I gave you because of some updated information, not the one that's in your file.
Yeah, 'cause, and some of this stuff, okay. Some of this stuff is, like, the first thing on your list, you'll see, there was a guy that gave us a canine. He paid for the entire, he paid for the dog, he paid for the training, he paid for everything, except for the salary of the employee. So we were able to add a canine, which will help. It's gonna be a track dog, it's gonna be a drug dog. So it's gonna enable us to have a little more features than the two dogs that we had. And actually, one of the dogs that we had, it wouldn't ride, when I got elected, it would not ride in the car and they wanted to get rid of it. So we had the dog evaluated by some experts and we decided to put it in the jail. So now that dog works under Wesley Wilson in the jail as a contraband dog. So we use that dog and we have taken it to the school as well, supplements at the school and doing stuff in the jail looking for contraband, which has been successful instead of just having to give the dog away that the county already had money invested in. So that was the first thing. And then, as you'll see, the CIT training. CIT is called Critical Incident Training. It's recommended for every first responder and anybody that works in public safety. It's how to deal with people with mental issues. And we're dealing with so many people currently that have mental issues. So this is a 40-hour training block that teaches them how to deal with these people instead of resorting, when somebody is being real aggressive, instead of immediately going to your firearm and taking a life. It teaches them how to de-escalate and to deal with those people in a manner that's not gonna cause harm to someone. So we're about two-thirds through with having everybody in the sheriff's office trained. And the FSA has a grant, so they're giving us money back each time we send somebody to that train. So not only are we getting some money for it, but we're also training folks and with some skills that are necessary to save, to save lives. Particularly the mental health issue because a lot of people that are on drugs also have mental health issues. And then you can see the, some of the money that we're talking about for the pass-through for the deputies. I know we have some FEMA money that was reimbursement for, and it's not even on here. The FEMA money that we had, I guess for overtime last year. And I'd like to use some of that money to do some of these things that we need to do at the sheriff's office, if y'all are so inclined to do that.
Any question from the board? Any comments on what the sheriff's proposing here or what he's asking for?
I make a motion, give him his money.
Sir. I wanna clarify, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I just wanna clarify what the sheriff is asking for since we're all here. What he's asking for is to keep the reimbursements that's on this spreadsheet. He's not asking the board to fund those projects and expenditures that's to the top part of the list.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, so I don't want you guys to think we're bound to fund any of those projects. But that's not what he's asking for. I just wanna make sure we're all on the same page with this request.
He's asking to keep a, the reimbursements, which total 128,501.28.
Yes, which will, which will help him with some of these projects.
He's done earned the money, I mean, it's just gonna come back to him.
Well, and at some point between now and our next budget workshops, these are no longer like unanticipated funds. So we'll have to sit down with the sheriff, the board, and decide how do we incorporate these into the budget. But that's, that's for future meeting. Right now, he's just asking to keep these.
And I do wanna add, the 128, those are the figures that I have on hand. That does not count the two unanticipated grants revenues. Once I hear a final on that, then I'll have a final figure for you on that. And as the sheriff just expressed, the Irma, the Hurricane Irma, we don't have any final figures on that either. So those three are kind of off to the side. We would like to go ahead and get the approval, we just don't know the final numbers on those yet.
There's not any of them.
No, sir, they're not.
Well, they've not been finally approved by the state agencies yet.
They didn't wanna put a number in there that they, that they don't really know what it is, maybe higher or lower.
I really think that we should approve the 128, 501.28. And when these other things come through, when you get all three of those things in, you need to come back and let the board know what the total is. I don't think it'll be a big deal for the board. But just in, in reference to approving something that we don't know what we're approving.
Nope.
I would like, I'd like to see that, just come back to the board and let the board make that determination. And we had, we had one motion and we had four seconds. Commissioner Masti made the motion.
I made the motion, give him the 128, 501.28.
Mr. Jones made the second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I think they're doing a good job with what they're doing and, you know. They're putting the money to good use.
Y'all have any other questions about what we're doing or anything? And I invite you to come by and see what we're doing. We've, we've been planning to open house, but it seems like we just keep finding things that we're trying to get done, just like we're starting the fence project that, and thank you for doing the asphalt. It looks amazing over there in the back. We have a nice wash rack and I actually was telling, anybody that has a county vehicle, drive it over, drive it through the car wash. We got people there to wash it, we're happy to do it because we have, it's really nice there and you can drive in and drive out. So please utilize, utilize this stuff. And again, thank you for, for doing those things and helping us keep the facility going.
We do have a motion and a second on the floor. Any other discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? That motion carries.
Thank you.
Board recess five minutes.